I'd like to call the meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So Jamie is running a bit late. Hopefully you can make it here tonight. But what we're going to do here to get started, because we've got an annual meeting that starts at seven, we need to make sure we get all the right things in order here before we get to that meeting. So we're going to change the agenda up slightly. And we're going to move to 4B to start and go through the preliminary 2021-22 budget discussion. We'll then come back up to topic two, which is citizens' request to speak. We have probably over 25. So we'll get back up and get through as many of those as we can to up to about 6:45. So that will be kind of the order for this evening. And then if we need to have any further following our annual meeting, we'll pick it back up, finish up any of those citizens' requests to speak, and then take on the rest of our agenda items after that, if that's the way the evening will go. So with that, we'll jump to 4B and pass it over to Tim.
Yep, Tim, go ahead. All right, thank you. So I'm not going to be repetitive because you saw the same budget at the last board meeting, and we'll have the same information going into the annual meeting tonight. So I will jump to that summary page, which is the general fund. And Tim, there you go, thank you. So you can see where overall total revenues are up 2.2%. Expenditures are down about a half percent. And that gives us a surplus of about 1.4 million. As you remember, there's no state aid, no increase in state aid. The funding came in the sort of, in a form of property tax relief. We are relying on some ESSER funds here. We don't know what the total amount of the ESSER funds are yet. But we do include a little over $1 million in revenue for ESSER funds in this budget. Also, in this budget, we've got the capital projects, which would have a board-committed fund balance. And that means you would take, the board would take action in October to commit fund balance of $900,000 to increase the capital projects fund. And that will, that will go into possibly, it will allow us to do more projects. It will keep us ahead a little bit instead of continually falling behind in that area. Self-funded health insurance, that one is one that's a, we've saved millions on every year. We should have, our goal is to get to about 40% of our total claims for that health insurance. So with this would bring it up to 2.4 million, 2,450,000. Again, we'd be about 1.2 million short of that 40% of claims benchmark that we'd like to shoot for. The fund balances as a percentage of expenditures is just under 40%. And that's higher, but as we've talked about before, this is something where we think the next biennium could also be tough. So we had zero revenue from the state for the next two years. And it's possible that we could, we could be in that same situation going into the next biennium. So, but it gives you, it gives the board a lot of flexibility. Even with all of this, the mill rate goes down 0.6%. And I'll go to the next page, Tim, the historical valuations and mill rate. And I'm just going to focus on that last line. These are estimates. The Department of Revenue will release the final valuations for the district in October. And so we're projecting an increase of 6.23%, which we use county figures. That'll be, that'll come in very close to that. You can see the total levy and then that mill rate percentage change. Down in the bottom section, we do have the valuation estimates for each municipality. And you can see how those are, those are ranging anywhere from a low of 3.41% in the city to a high of 10.61% valuation change in the town of St. Joe. And then the next few pages are the budget, budget by function for all funds. And they're not, certainly not as understandable, but this is a required, state-required budget organization format. So we provide that as well. And that just goes through all of the different funds that we operate through. And more on that as we go through the annual meeting. And then that would be it. So we'd need your action to approve this budget going into the annual meeting. And again, October will be the time, end of October is, will be the time where you do a final approval of the budget.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Any questions from the board members? We've seen this budget on a number of occasions. Certainly appreciate all the work that you've done here. To Tim's point, if there aren't any questions, we do need a resolution to get the budget approved for the annual meeting that we have following this meeting.
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Moved to approve the preliminary 2021-2022 budget as presented.
Got a motion by Heather, is there a second? Second from Bob. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. And the motion passes. All right, so we've got an approved budget. We will go back up to citizens' requests to speak. We have 26 presently, but I think Tim's going to bring me a couple more. Thank you very much. So we have 28. As I stated, we'll, we'll get started, we'll get through as many as we can. I believe that every request in here is regarding masks or the matrix or some variation thereof. So we will be giving each individual two minutes to speak up here. And, you know, appreciate the last number of meetings that we've had here. There's been a lot of great comments, certainly appreciate those. And also been a lot of people that have been very passionate about this, certainly appreciate that as well. So appreciate the respect that everyone has brought here this evening. And we'll get through as many of these as we can. So when I call your name or have you come up, state your name and your address. Again, this is reserved for those Hudson residents. So just want to make sure that everybody's located in the Hudson School District. With that, our first citizen request to speak is from Chase Raven. Yes.
Um, hello, my name's Chase Raven. My address is 42 Country View Road, Hudson, Wisconsin, of course. I'm a student here at Hudson High School. So I am representing the many students who felt forced to wear masks out of fear of being sent home or missing out on their sports. Today, I walked into my American history class and said the Pledge of Allegiance. And immediately after saying liberty and justice for all, I'm asked, Chase, do you have a mask? The irony and hypocrisy of this situation does not escape me. The American flag I was just pledging my allegiance to gives me the liberty and free will to make my own personal choice in how I protect my body. Through my conversations with staff today, it was apparent many don't want to enforce these rules. Many, in fact, don't even want to wear the mask themselves. I personally think they're wearing them in fear of losing their jobs or other such consequences, since many, if not most, chose not to wear a mask when it was optional. American history is one of my favorite classes, and it sucked to leave that class today because I believe mandates have no place in a country that pledges their allegiance to a flag that symbolizes freedom. I want to attend a school where when I stand up in my history class and pledge my allegiance, I am doing it under liberty. Please reconsider your mask mandates.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nick Hornung. That's all right.
All right, that's really loud. My name's Nick Hornung. I live at 801 Grant Avenue in Hudson. So I'm a junior at Hudson High School. And there have been Januaries throughout my tenure in this district where there's the third student body out with the flu. Nobody seemed to care about masking. Now with 2% of students in this building having COVID, we're going to muzzle every single student and every staffer. We're going in a direction which has made this school and this whole district completely unrecognizable from what we want, normal. There's no sense of normalcy. You force teachers, many of whom don't want to be stuck wearing these muzzles themselves and are doing so in fear of losing their job. You've winded the divide between students and staff. As your subjects, we have, you have unrestricted authority to ruin the mental health, the academics, the emotional well-being, and the social ability by forcing students to wear these mind-control devices. You do not seem to care. You've heard from parents over the last several months how they feel. It's time to hear our voices too. If you really did, you'd understand freedom. And that if I were to choose to live my life in fear, I would do so. All I ask, and as many of my peers do as well, is a choice. The choice to live my life the way I choose. Let us be, allow us to make our own choices on our own personal health that we believe ourselves and our faith and our families. Please reconsider your mask mandate.
Thanks, Nick. Adria Schmidt Coons.
Hello, my name is Adria Schmidt Coons, and I live on 1610 Laurel Avenue in Hudson. I am a senior here at Hudson High School. And last year's protocols were not, were not ideal, but at least it looked like the district was doing their part to help slow the spread. Walking into school this year, I was happy yet disappointed. This year felt like it was moving again. No more red tape on the floors indicating where students should walk, no more plexiglass. Most hand sanitizers are empty around the buildings and not being refilled. Students and staffs are not obsessing over cleaning. And the fact that I have to use weights and other gym equipment also used by sweaty students is disturbing when they're not being wiped down. No more social distancing this year. This year, students are not spaced in their classes like before. The district can't pick and choose what rules to follow. Your back-to-school blueprint is now enforcing the mask mandate, but you're doing nothing like you did last year to help. Does social distancing work or not? Does the red tape work or not? Does wiping down fitness equipment work or not? Does the plexiglass work or not? The mask mandate is becoming a mental health issue. I'm frustrated with being forced to wear a mask. I'm scared of being forced to vaccinate. Everyone is divided by politics. I am no longer judged for my character, but for what I believe in. Home of the free is now a false statement. Please move back to the masks as an optional choice to better the mental health of your students. I know what I need for myself, and it is not a mask mandate.
Thanks, Adria. Terry Anderson.
Hi, I'm Terry Anderson. I live at 517 Prairie Drive North, Hudson, Wisconsin. I just want to read this to you from, I would think would be somebody that knows what they're talking about when they manufacture these masks. Warning: This mask is not a respirator. It is intended for a general purpose. When properly worn, it reduces potential contact by the wearer to fluids, but does not eliminate the risk of contracting any virus or infection. Change the mask immediately if contaminated with blood or bodily fluids. Subject spit. This is disposable. So it's my understanding that the St. Croix County, and we're not in an emergency situation right now. So I want to, I just like wonder, why is a board serving our children put forward that they have the authority to enforce masks in public buildings exceeding expectations by county recommendations? Is it healthy? I don't think so. Likely children with imposed inhibited breathing per masking subjected to the bacteria trapped in a damp mask for an extended period of time are a great physical and mental health risk. I don't give you the authority over my children. And I don't believe these other parents do either. I don't think that you know them better than me. I don't think that you're privy to their health records and to generally across the board, put masks on everybody. Who do you think you are?
Thanks, Terry. Leah Isaacson.
Hello, thanks for giving us this forum tonight. My name's Leah Isaacson, and I live at 89 Tribute Avenue in Hudson. My husband and I have five young children. The oldest three are students at Rivercrest. I'm here tonight to be their advocate and their voice because they feel like they have no one who is listening to them at school in this current situation. I oppose the matrix. I oppose forcing masks on our young children when the evidence doesn't support it. And I support the rights of these parents here tonight and in our entire district to make medical decisions for their children. We know our children best. These policies are looking at our kids as vectors for disease. They are not appreciating our children as whole human beings. I'm sick of hearing others say, the kids don't mind it, they're doing just fine. Kids are compliant by nature. They, especially young children, they want to please the adults they view in authority. That includes their teachers, that includes the school staff. And I'll tell you, if these kids are anything like mine, they're not okay. Kids are having trouble with mental health right now. My children loved school. And now I'm dealing with anxious children who are having chronic headaches. My fifth grader came home from school every day last year with migraines. She had no history of headaches. Today was her first day back in a mask. I didn't even tell them until they were getting on the bus this morning because I knew she wouldn't want to go. First thing she said today in tears was, Mom, my headache is back. How much longer do I have to do this? My third grader, who is an absolutely amazing student, doesn't understand the hypocrisy. She's not one to complain unless it's to me. She's a perfect student. But today, she just said, I'm so sad, Mom. I'm so sad. I couldn't concentrate. I was so dizzy. I said, did you ask for a break? She said, no, I was afraid to ask. When my friends pulled their mask down to take a break, their teacher yelled at them. And I said, I'm sorry that happened. You can speak up, I'll speak up for you. And she said, Mom, I don't understand why my teacher can take her mask off to read to the class, but I can't ask for a break, and my friends are getting yelled at. This makes no sense. This is the same student who was afraid last week because she chose not to wear a mask, like the vast majority of her classmates, and was teased by other students who said she was going to be responsible for killing their grandparents. That's not okay. That's not okay. And that's not a healthy environment for our children to live in. We know what constant stress does to someone's immune system. Think about the stress these kids have been under. The healthiest vaccinated, fully vaccinated adults are at a higher risk than our unvaccinated children. That's proven fact. My kids can't make sense of the safety rules, and my job is to explain it to them. I can't. They're constantly living in a state of heightened fear. We are not in a society where we need to be navigating arcane safety rules that change. There is always going to be safer alternatives, but that is not the way to live. We need to support our students, prevent the growing mental health crisis. Try getting an appointment for your child with any counselor right now. The waitlist is months long, and it's not getting better. Suicides are up, depression is up.
Hey Leah, we're past the two-minute mark, so thank you very much for your comments.
Appreciate your time, I hope you listen.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, sir. My alarm's set there, so I did give her a little bit longer. Olivia, I'm probably not going to say the last name correctly here, Toziba? Sorry about that.
I'm Olivia Joba. I live at 101 Dunbar Pass in Hudson. I attend 5th grade at EPRA Elementary School. I would like to discuss my opinion on masks. Masks make it hard for me to concentrate and learn. Last year, I was scared that if my mask went down, I would get in trouble. When wearing a mask, I have a hard time meeting new people, making new friends. I trust my parents a lot more than a matrix. Why can't they make the decision if I wear a mask or not the whole year? If masks are optional, people that want to wear them can wear them. Why are we all wearing masks? Many people would rather have a choice than be forced to wear a face mask. Thank you for your time and have a good rest of your night.
Appreciate your bravery, Olivia. Next is Ben Chova. Is that better, Ben?
Hold on. She's a little short. All right. No, good evening. Ben Chova, 101 Dunbar Pass, Hudson, Wisconsin. I have three kids, one who you just heard from. I have a middle schooler and a high schooler as well. And I'm just here to advocate not only for them, but just for the thousands of kids in this school district and who we have seen in the absence of the mask mandate make the choice not to wear a mask. The school district, we don't have an emergency, there is no mask mandate in place whatsoever. And we're ignoring the expert recommendations. And we've decided to make a fallacious mask mandate that's not based on science. There's nothing behind it whatsoever. I find it unacceptable that parents, the definitive experts on the physical, mental, and emotional well-being of their own children are being largely ignored. You see that in the people standing outside the schools. They're protesting to be heard. Simply put, the mask matrix is not science. It's a science experiment. And that's what we teach our kids in school, is we are putting a hypothesis to the test, not actual science. Last year, we proved, and Dr. Lett has said numerous times, that COVID was not being spread in our schools, but being spread outside the school settings. To be honest, Hudson's a small community, and we do. We watch the teachers, we watch the administration, we watch the board members. We see everyone out and about, because you can be, at restaurants, bars, other locations. And I see you're wearing masks tonight. But again, if we're not seeing the spread in the schools, we're bringing it into the schools from these other places. What is the positive effect that's being done? It's duplicitous, and it teaches our kids the wrong thing. I mean, I also think it's interesting, we have a mask matrix that doesn't include all of our school buildings. It only includes the school buildings that have students in them. And I'm sure there's other things being done at the administrative level. But if we are to be an example for our kids, what message does that send? By instituting the mask matrix, the Hudson School Board has placed themselves above the government health authorities. And I'll be done in five seconds here. The fundamental and long-recognized inherent right protected by Wisconsin, the Constitution, the 14th Amendment, Supreme Court, is the right of parents to direct the upbringing and education of children under their control. We are the decision-makers for our children. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Thank you. Next is, I'll do my best, Deborah Monacy? Monakin?
I'm Deborah Monakin from 207th Street North in North Hudson. I want to thank all of you for, I think, what is a very hard effort to contain what is probably one of the worst infectious situations that I have experienced in my long career as a nurse practitioner. And that said, I'm retired, so I'm pleased with that. Once my students brought up to me my head injury patients that they didn't fill, or they wanted to argue the point of helmets and motorcycles and helmets and bikes. And my point was then, and my point is now, is that's fine if you're willing to make the insurance to assure that you are not going to impact society, whether financially or socially in any way. While I very much appreciate the dilemmas that are going on with family members, everybody has an accountability for the person next to you. You cannot, and we do not want to have a child get sick or have long-term complications that are going to be something that we could have prevented. So I encourage you to go with the CDC, with the State of Wisconsin Health Plan. And while I appreciate that many people have issues, we need to sit down then and discuss how we can do it consistently, but not politically. Thank you.
Thanks, Deborah. Next, we have Ricky Magalanes.
Hi, I'm Ricky Magalanes, 1006 St. Croix Street North, Hudson, Wisconsin. I've got three young kids in the school district. I want to give you guys a lot of props for coming up here. It's really, really big that these kids are telling you this shit. I'm staff, sorry, I'm really bad at swearing. And nobody hears it. So us parents are trying to advocate, and it's not working. I don't know what it is or what makes you guys decide that we are no longer in charge of our kids' medical freedom. Said, great with liberty and justice for all. It is our individual rights to decide how we want to live our lives. Yes, we do have rules and restrictions that we have to abide by to be good people. But in no way should anyone ever tell me that if I'm going to go in because I got a cut on my finger into a store, I have to wear a Band-Aid. I'm sorry, it's not going to happen if the cut is contained. The point of the matter is, is masks do not prevent you against viral infections. And every time you touch your mask, all you're doing is adding more bacteria to it. Kids wear these masks all day long. They sweat in them, they breathe in them. So all of that perspiration and saliva coming out of their mouths are sitting inside there, waiting to absorb whatever bacteria goes onto them because they're touching them. If our kids are getting sick, then they need to stay home. They don't need to wear a mask at school when they're healthy. When we have, when they have the colder flu, we keep our kids home. If they have COVID, we keep them home. There's no reason in the world why, that has ever been proven why we need to keep these kids in school with masks on. It takes away from their ability to see each other, to be able to respect each other as individuals, to be able to see someone else smile and see the emotions. I have an autistic son, and if he can't see your face, he doesn't know what you're doing, and it's frustrating. And he's being forced to wear a mask. No way should kids be wearing masks. If you can go outside every single day, as was said earlier, to the store, to a restaurant, and not wear a mask, our kids do not need to be wearing masks in school. It simply should not be done. I am the parent, I will decide if I need to wear a mask. It is, if you want them to wear a mask, by all means, you let your kid wear a mask, but I will never let my kids wear masks.
Thanks, Ricky. Next, we have Elise Multer. Hope I got that right.
You got it.
All right.
Hi, my name's Elise Multer. I'm 1006 St. Croix Street North, the other half of the guy that was just here. So we have three children, and I just think that it is wrong that everybody is treated as they are ill. You should not have to wear a medical device. And yes, face coverings by the FDA have declared them a medical device when they're used for COVID. And to treat every single person as possibly diseased is wrong. And that is mentally wrong for children. That's mentally wrong for adults. I don't care who you are as a human. We should all, we all talk about community and being acceptance of everybody and all this stuff. And then you just throw that out the window by saying, oh, they could get me sick, they could kill me, they could do this. You're playing a mental game, and it makes no sense. Stop treating everyone as sick. You're playing a mental game and it makes no sense. Stop treating everyone as sick. You are treating everyone as sick. If someone's sick, that's when the protocol is come into, come into play. You stay home, you quarantine and do all that stuff. Not before. Um, and also, there's also an email that just went out for the Honor Society and it had a prerequisite, just in case vaccines might be required for all the adults that want to come see their kids in the Honor Society and all the students that are middle school and high school. So what is that? Where is this line? It's already crossed. I'm sorry, it's already crossed. We're tired, we're sick of, of pretending that everyone's sick. We're done. Let it be a choice. We are not demanding anything from you. We are not. We're letting you choose for yourselves. We're letting everybody for their parents choose for their kids. We are not demanding anything from you besides freedom and liberty. You're demanding us to wear a mask. You're demanding our kids to wear a mask. That's not okay. Stop the demand. Stop.
Thanks, Elise. Uh, next is Jennifer Norden.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Norden. I live at 1008 Eighth Street. And I'm showing off my really expensive PPE tonight that the CDC recommends, got it for a buck at Walmart. Um, it's going to save everybody's life. It's going to, you know, really give me a ticket into my education. Um, this says, this mask follows CDC recommendations for cloth facial coverings for public settings. These masks are not medical-grade surgical masks or N95 respirators. But what the, what the board is doing is making this your golden ticket to your education, which is our constitutional right. And it has to stop. We can go out to eat, we can go to all these other places on the weekends. We can be here tonight. This is not a golden ticket. And I'm really sick of, of school boards. I hear this, I watch videos from all over the country. We're following CDC recommendations. Well, stop it. Because the CDC is not God, okay? They don't know everything. There are other experts all over the world that are saying that masks do not work. Why are we not listening to them? Why is CDC God in this situation? I don't understand it. There are PhDs from Stanford and virologists and epidemiologists and and people who are making vaccines that say this is not safe. Why are we not listening to them? What is the deal? Why are we blind? Research is to be unbiased. You are not supposed to take advice from people who are benefiting from their product, right? So let's be honest. I am just so frustrated with it being political. I love science. I don't believe in science. I want science proved to me with the facts. I want true data. I am not believing in a cult. I am not believing in a club. I want true facts. If we don't start looking at the true facts and start really listening to the science that we are believing in a cult, that we are just following and obeying, please be leaders and not followers. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Uh, next we'll have Gunner Norden.
Hi, uh, my name is Gunner and I live at 1008 Eighth Street. Uh, I'm a freshman here at Hudson High School. I would just like to ask a quick question. So this morning, um, how come I was sent to the principal's office for not wearing a mask? But tonight I can sit in the auditorium and speak without wearing one. This mask matrix does not make any sense to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Gunner. Next we will have Nicole Dennison.
My name is Nicole Dennison. I live at 1817 Albert Street. I'm here just to say I'm pro-health choice and medical freedom. I want you to let families make their own healthcare choices. We don't give you the authority. I have three children in the high school. They didn't want to speak and I won't force them to, but they don't want to wear these masks. They're distracting. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Uh, next is William Kinsit.
Greetings, school board members. Thank you for allowing me to share your time. Uh, to the point, noting no public hue and cry demanding everybody do something at a recent board meeting, opposition to mask mandates was four to one. And despite recommendations with authority from the school district, county, and state health departments, as well as Department of Public Instruction, all roads on this trial matrix journey lead to the Cent, Centers for Disease Control. The CDC is the matrix and I have links to prove it. Yet lifted wholesale from their voluminous data, including a potent and a patent of a certain coronavirus circa 2003, the buck stops here. Despite this, in all their due diligence, the aforementioned agencies missed at a minimum one important point. Beginning with the Wisconsin Electronic Data Surveillance System, exclusive use of PCR tests to gather COVID-19 data, they are now obsolete since, uh, July of this year, actually. Now, everyone, please remain calm. How can this be, you might ask? I have a link from the CDC, the lab alert. The CDC revoked the RTC PCR test for its inability to differentiate between influenza and COVID-19 viruses. All those false positives. At least we know now what happened to the flu. Excuse me for shouting. Uh, but what's a state health agency to do? Well, previously, our own state Supreme Court struck down their unconstitutional redundancy. We still have the National Teachers Unions to thank for demanding our children adhere to mask mandates. On May 15th, the CDC reversed themselves after only two days and then caved in. After all, the CDC is the matrix. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, William. Next up is Kendra Grams.
I'm Kendra Grams. I live at 710 St. Croix Street North. I have two, uh, small children at North Hudson Elementary. And I continue to urge you to require masks indoors in all school buildings, at least until vaccines are readily available for all age groups serviced by the school system and/or local transmission of COVID-19 returns to low levels as defined by public health officials. I urge you to do so not only because the scientific and public health communities have come to the clear consensus that masks are a key mitigation strategy to help slow the spread of COVID-19, keep students learning in person, and keep our communities healthy, but also because it promotes equity and the best in us and our students. As a board, you took the important steps last year to conduct an equity audit of the school district. I applaud this effort and urge you to actively address the recommendations from the report on a clear timeline, while also viewing masking requirements as an opportunity to promote safety for all and for immunocompromised and medically vulnerable staff and students in particular, thereby, thereby advancing your commitment to equity. Additionally, proactively doing everything we can to keep kids in school is particularly important for economically disadvantaged students whose parents work hourly jobs. So staying home with quarantined or sick kids means lost income and that can quickly spiral to additional negative impacts. Finally, requiring masks of all asks everyone to be our best selves by recognizing that we are in this together and only together will we put the pandemic behind us. So now is the time for all of us to dig deep and mask up because it affirms for us and teaches our students that the science we teach in classrooms matters, that sometimes it is more important to prioritize the community than our personal desires and that even when we're tired of doing the hard thing, we do it because we care about other people. Thank you for your service and consideration.
Thanks, Kendra. Next we've got, uh, Tim Congdon.
Thank you for your time. My name is Tim Congdon, uh, 548 Tolgren Street. I do have a student here at Hudson High School. My train of thought kind of gets sidetracked a little bit, so I wrote something down this time. We'll see what happens. Start out, how far we've come. Last month, I stood before you all and complimented your well-planned, reasonable, common sense approach to the 2122 school year, your blueprint for return. If you recall, I urged a risk versus reward approach to your decisions regarding safety policies along with the potential risks to our kids' mental health by disrupted social interaction, as did one of your own guidance counselors and many others. There's no mention of any sort of mask mandates until a former board member suggested the creation of Matrix, like was done last year for the instruction delivery models. During that, the discussion ensued, the board voted to task the administration with this. They did, it was presented and discussed at the August 30th work session with no public comment allowed, as is customary at those meetings. It was incorporated into the revised blueprint. And school started. I enjoyed watching the back-to-school pictures that the district posted on the district Facebook page, all the schools. Kids smiling, returning to school, being greeted by smiling teachers. Everyone's happy to get back. It was really cool to see, right? Some have stated the support for masks or not is about 50/50 based on emails to all of you, which I'll admit, some of those have come from me. You're probably sick of hearing from a lot of us. But you can't necessarily go by that, just like with our elections, email counts, stuff like that is really subject to who actually turns out, shows up, who emails, right? What I think we need to gauge how people really feel about this issue is by looking at those pictures. And those pictures, when masks were optional, excuse me, recommended at the beginning of the school year, because the language has changed a little bit. All of those pictures, it was probably about 90%, 95%. Almost, I didn't even get to the rest, but really reconsider this. It's, I think what's going on tonight really tells us how the community feels. It's up to you to decide how you're going to govern the school district. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jen. Uh, next is Rebecca Rogan.
Hello, good evening. Um, I'm Rebecca Reglin. I live at 648 Countryside Circle here in Hudson. Um, three kids in the school district, two in high school, one in elementary. Um, we did end up homeschooling last year just because of masks and the unknown. And I feel like we've moved forward, um, but not forward enough. And ultimately, that's why I'm here before you. I would encourage you to please keep masks optional. Um, let us choose what we want, which is right, what is right for our children. I'm not saying we need to say nobody can wear masks. I'm saying we need to let us choose. Um, I could bring up natural immunity, dad on how flu cases are really, whoa, 10% of what they were in 2019. I could simply say don't consent, but I want to instead ask what makes America great. One of the reasons is our freedom, our freedom to choose, to choose what works best for our family and our children. Geez, I feel like we are just taking away from some of their early years, their just genuine pureness. Um, I feel like masks are stopping them from sharing emotions, their smiles, making friends. They already grow up too fast and I feel like now they're being forced and something that most don't want to do. In closing, I want to thank you for doing your job. It's tough, but I also ask that you allow me to do mine as a mother, to teach my children to be respectful, to be safe, but also have the freedom to choose, a freedom we deserve. Medical mandates have no place in a free society. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Next is Sarah Garrett. Thanks for the assist.
Hi. Um, what continues to strike me the most is how divisive this issue is. I could understand the division if we had one side arguing that everyone has to wear masks and one side arguing that no one is allowed to wear masks, but that's not the case. I support every single parent who makes the decision to wear a mask and have their child wear a mask. I could argue that in doing so, they are spreading fear and anxiety and issues of control that negatively affect my children. I believe that. But I also recognize that my concerns do not trump their right to decide what's best for their families. In fact, if anyone tried to tell them that they couldn't make those decisions for their children, I would have their backs and I would go to bat for them. In return, I'm asking to respect my rights to choose what is best for my kids. At this point, they aren't going to produce some graph to change my mind on the efficacy of masks in this setting, and I'm not going to produce a study to change their mind on the ineffectiveness and the harm they do. So our only solution is agreeing to respect each other's rights to choose what's best for our own families. The compromise actually is mandatory masks. If I have any time left, um, I would ask again, I asked last time, um, if you would please poll the parents. Um, I know that you are saying that you're seeing 50/50 emails. Send a poll out. Ask your parents what they believe is best for their kids. I also have a question about the matrix I haven't received an answer to. Um, in regards to EP Rock going mask mandatory on Tuesday, um, the majority of the reported cases hadn't even been in attendance yet that school year. So I'm curious as to why those counted against EP Rock. That's it.
Thanks, Sarah. Up next, we've got Teresa Tip.
Hi, my name's Teresa Tip, 926 Florence Lane, Hudson Township. I have four adult children now that graduated from Hudson and my fifth child is currently in elementary. Um, I could just go over and say exactly what every other parent has said. It'd be repetition, so I just want to say I concur with everything. You do not have, I do not give you authority over my child. The negative physical and mental health effects on my child. Being forced to wear a mask mandate for 8.5 hours, five days a week. It's not acceptable. Prior to the summer masking and after the summer for masking, my daughters required no medication to breathe, none whatsoever, no asthma attacks. Dramatic to put that up there, but do you know what that does to a child? I have a doctor's request in regards to her mask at school that is never once been validated. She's afraid to ask for these helps for these breaks. Let alone she did not go to school today out of fear because she knows once she puts on a mask, this is required. It's all required. But when she doesn't wear a mask all summer, not one single asthma attack, not one single flare-up. And these medications make her shake. She feels horrible on them. And she cannot function with her sensory disorder with a mask on her face either. And I'm just here. And I'm just here to stand up for my daughter's rights. That's all.
Thanks, Lisa. Next. Next up, we've got Beth Weiskopf.
Excuse me, I'm going to try to compose myself. I don't know what else I can say to you up there that I haven't already said or sent to you, because there's been a lot. I'd like to address this community first of all. I've been at the protests every single day because in my heart, I know that I'm doing is right. Not once did we say anything to anyone or engage unless they engaged with us first, and it was only politeness back. We were standing on public property, holding signs. The vulgarity that we received back from members of this community is absolutely apparent. A police report was filed as I felt it was necessary. They are saying that we are blocking doors, blocking kids from getting to school. It is complete lies, and my name is getting smeared all over at public. Whatever it's called, Facebook, whatever. But I know what I'm doing is right, and what they're saying we're doing is exactly what they're doing, and not one of us was ever rude to anyone. And today, my son chose, my oldest son, to go to school without a mask and stand up for his rights. And he spent the day in the principal's office, isolated by himself, doing homework, because he felt that he needed to do that, and he will do it again, and I support him on that, and I did not tell him to do that. My youngest is in sixth grade, and he was bawling this morning at the pressure to have to wear a mask again. And I had to tell him, I support you either way. And he chose to wear one even though he knows that goes against our religious beliefs and his constitutional rights. But he chose to do it, and I told him I love him and I support him for that. I do not tell my children what to do on this issue. They know my thoughts. My son, I am so proud of him, chose to do this. Give the right back to the parents. We are not telling anyone they cannot wear this. Not once have we ever said that. We're asking for everyone to have the same rights. I am prepared to take more steps as I feel that we do have the right. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Next up, we've got Jake Weiskopf.
Hello, my name's Jake Weiskopf. I live at 2408 Downing Way in Hudson. I'm a student here at the high school, and I'm speak, I'm here to speak to you about the mask mandate that forced students to wear masks during school and being sent home for not wearing one. This morning, I walked into school maskless because it was my, it is against my constitutional rights and my religious beliefs to wear a mask. I had a religious exemption that was denied last year, actually. After about five minutes passed this morning, I was approached and brought to the office and talked to by administration. I was then put in a little pod in the office and forced to isolate myself for the entirety of the school day. As a student who likes to learn and socialize with other students, this is absurd. In a free country that you have the gift of walking into a public school along with me and the many other parents and staffers, I think this is outrageous. Please take another look at your school district and see all the students that don't want to attend the school because of this mandate.
Thanks, Jake. Next up is Stacy Zaza. Hopefully I said that right. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. My name is Stacia Zaza.
Sorry, Stacia.
Nope, that's okay. I live off, I live 429 Brookwood Drive in Hudson, and I'm a mother of four. I've already sent one through the school district, was a 2017 graduate. We can't say enough about really how amazing the staff and the school, and we know you guys try very hard to keep the kids safe. Anytime he had a problem back then, ever felt uncomfortable, ever had an issue, we could go in, and needs were always met, always. I have a third grader at Willow. I have a sixth grader at the middle school, and I have a brand-new 4K little boy this year at Willow. You know, last year was tough on the kids with masks. They did not like the masks, but they really didn't complain. They did amazing. Literally, I hired a big ice cream truck for all the kids in our neighborhood the last day of school because we were so proud. I mean, it was hard on us, it was hard on them, but they barely complained. And then they went through the summer, being able to have a real summer again, and go to parades and go to fireworks and sign up for summer school programs at the middle school and spend time there with friends and do classes and do sports, and you're nothing about this and not wear masks. To come back the first week of school to have a blow is just sad, and you could see it in their faces. And like these other parents said, going just to your gut as a mother, not knowing what to do because they're having anxiety. My 4K student sent today, he never had to wear a mask because the mandate in Wisconsin was five years older, older. So his bus ride this year was really the first time and struggled with it, rides with his older sister, and she said he doesn't want to keep it on. And, and so today, and we sat down and talked to him, but he had his first mental breakdown there. They need it, they need it to express emotion, to feel safety, to feel smile, to feel comfort, to not see or be able to express their feelings through their expressions at four-years-old, five-years-old kindergarteners? I mean, it's wrong. It's so wrong. I just, I just felt helpless. Do I take him out and not give him the education or the social environment, which he loves so much because of this? It's, it's a horrible feeling as a parent not knowing what to do. It doesn't feel right. It just doesn't feel right. I would please ask that you reevaluate your mask requirement.
Thanks, Stacia. Next up is Matt Schroeder.
I'm Matt Schroeder, 70 Cooler Road, Hudson. Phone just died. That sucks. But the end of it is, if every student who didn't want to wear a mask, didn't wear a mask, the principal's office isn't big enough to hold all of them.
Thanks, Matt. Next up is Dan Buckle.
Hi, I'm Dan Buckle, 1286 Crately Lane. I'm also a, I'm a citizen of Hudson. I'm also an employee of the Hudson School District. I'm taking off that hat tonight and talking to you as a resident of Hudson, a community member. And what I'm looking at here on my phone is your strategic plan 2020, 2025. We've seen it on the big screen up there, and it have, if you're not familiar with it, at the base of the triangle is our community. It's what we're built on as a school district, our community. I'm hearing our community, and I'm wondering if you are too. Because right now, it's been pretty overwhelming. Every single meeting that I've been at, our community is speaking to you as a school board, and they're telling you something, and are you listening? Because it's interesting, when I look at the base of this pyramid, I see a engage in meaningful partnerships between families and districts. Was there a partnership when this matrix was made? Was there a partnership when this matrix was made? I want to ask you just one more time. Was there a partnership when this matrix was made? Because it doesn't seem like it. It seems like it was just made. And the community is asking us to respond to them, and it just doesn't feel like we are. And so I would ask us to step up and fulfill what our vision is, our strategic plan is, is to engage with the community and make meaningful partnerships with the community. I hope that we can do that, because that's what they're asking of us. And so as a community member, I, I ask that you do that, that you have meaningful partnerships with us. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Next up is Stephanie Ustigian. Oh, this actually is Stephanie Ustigian. Sorry about that. I saw Stephanie make a move and then.
Hi, everyone. My name's Stephanie Ustigian. I live at 849 Waldorf Farm Road in the township of Hudson. I was here last month speaking during another session, and I've got a little bit of a different take tonight because of what happened at the first day of school today with a mask mandate. I have a son who is a freshman at the Hudson High School. He attended from K through eighth at a private school here in town and has never experienced a mask all the way through a school day. So my son has a hearing loss. He doesn't like to talk about that because it's embarrassing. But he was diagnosed as a result of numerous ear infections as a small child and also had ear tubes at nine months of age and again at two. As he aged into early elementary, it became clear by his teachers and his dad and I that he wasn't hearing at an appropriate age level. We did have an assessment done and conducted by a pediatric audiologist. He was nine at the time, and we were told he had the hearing of a forty-something-year-old. And at the time, I was in my forties, and so I got it. Consequently, throughout then, his later years through attending Trinity Academy, he was always put at the front of the classroom. That wasn't embarrassing at that school. But now as a freshman and today being forced to wear a mask, he really struggled hearing some of his teachers. And so this is a little bit of a different angle that I am imploring to you, but those with disabilities are suffering as well. And so I would request that you allow the masks to be optional for our teachers and our students. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Next up is Melanie Dodge.
Hi, my name's Melanie, and I live at 19 Ashbury Court in Hudson. I have three young kids, two kindergartners, and one in second grade at EP Rock. They do not like to wear a mask. It is harmful for them. My youngest son has a severe peanut allergy, and nobody has taken responsibility as far as if a reaction is not caught, who's responsible? You may not see the early reactions, just like the previous speaker just talked about. It's, there's, these kids with disabilities, mental, physical, social, whatever, you know? And I've been trying to get ahold of our doctors, and it's just, it's hard. The doctors want to trust the schools. The schools want to trust the doctors. I am their mother. I am in the middle of this. I emailed all of you, heard back from one person. Masks need to be a choice. I also have a daughter who has hearing loss and speech delays. A mask is not good for her. We were able to make some accommodations for her with her IEP, and I really appreciate that. However, she still needs to wear a mask at certain times in the day. And it's just not always the best decision for our kids. I am a nurse. I work at Children's Hospital. The amount of kids and teenagers we are seeing with mental health, depression, admissions for psych care, eating disorders has skyrocketed. And I've talked to these parents, and I said, what do you think triggered this? The masking. The masking. They're isolated, and this is what's causing these kids all these, I mean, it's not the only issue, but this is making it harder for them, and their parents have said that to me. Just like somebody else said, to get into a counselor right now is difficult. We have kids waiting in our ER for three, four, five days because there's no inpatient beds. This is only going to get worse. We need to think about the mental health of our children and our teens. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Next up, we got Rico Heisler.
Hi, I'm Rico Heisler, 1404 Second Street, Hudson. My wife is a teacher here. I've been directing plays and musicals here as well with my wife for the last 17 years. One of the reasons that she's maybe not up here is because there is not a feeling in this district that teachers and staff are allowed to express opposing viewpoints. Now, this morning, my healthy ninth-grade son and others were denied entry into their classes in this building. They were denied their state constitutional right to a public education because they asserted their basic liberty, their freedom of religion, their freedom of conscience, freedom from being abused by those who would forcefully shroud their healthy faces and for refusing to be bullied into being terrified, terrified of their teachers, friends, or of a virus with an infinitesimal chance of causing those in their demographic any significant harm. Now, these few brave kids, they've been forced to stand up to adults whose job it is to stand up for them, many of whom are sitting here right now with their face just covered. So for those kids who cannot wear masks and are being denied entry into their classrooms for the sake of equity, and while masks are being required, are there accommodations that can be made for the students, these students, to continue with their coursework? Or are they simply a minority out of luck?
Thanks, Rico. Next up is Chad Wertzma. Sorry about that, Chad, didn't make it.
That's all right. Yeah, my name is Chad Wertzma, 66 Tribute Hudson. For this, to me, it comes down to freedom of choice, the individual, and what's best for themselves, and parents and the children. Superintendent Olet has pointed out multiple board meetings that approximately 90% of students and staff chose not to wear masks in school-age care, and I would assume that's the same for the first couple of weeks of school. That's a pretty telling observation of what people in the community really think of the mask mandate and that they're really not warranted. And if you venture out into public, really, the only people that you will see choosing, I don't even know if you'd say choosing to wear a mask, are the ones that are forced to by their employers out of fear of losing their jobs. That's also very wrong. The school board chose to adopt the mask matrix idea that former school board member, Mr. Brown, proposed back in August. This was a bad idea, and there's a reason the community did not reelect Mr. Brown. And for that reason, the community was tired of bad ideas like the matrix. The matrix has only deepened the divide in the community, created nothing but confusion, anger among parents, students, and staff. And now forced by these ridiculous authoritarian rules. The matrix should be thrown out and freedom of choice must be reinstated immediately. This authoritarianism and government overreach that is spreading throughout our community and local communities is not only alarming, but completely un-American and flat-out wrong. So I join the call for this board to cancel the matrix and reinstate freedom of choice immediately. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. We're gonna make it. We got three. Lisa Buckle.
Hi, Lisa Buckle. Thank you for your diligent
Hi, Lisa Buckle. Thank you for your diligent work in this, navigating these crazy waters. For two days last week, I stood outside EP Rock with other moms, dads, grandparents and children, bringing awareness to the parents of EP Rock's children that we support parents' right to choose what is the best for their children. No one harassed children or blocked their way into school. We were joined the first day by Superintendent Olet and the rest of the administrative team as they observed us doing just that. In a brief conversation with him, he thanked us for not getting crazy or out of control. We held signs and engaged in a few conversations with respectful folks wanting to know more about why we were doing this. Unlike reportedly frenetic social media statements by those who weren't in attendance, our gathering was quite pleasant. It was American. Citizens doing their due diligence, flexing their civic muscles. Our right to choose what is best for our bodies and what is best for our children's bodies is a freedom that none of us should be so eager to part with. With an apathetic view of human rights and without vigilant protection, these rights will diminish and disappear, not just for those you may disagree with today, but they will disappear for you as well. Our founding fathers of this great country that we all get to live in warned against medical tyranny. They knew someone would always come up with an urgent reason to strip freedoms. I encourage members of this board to remember, like Dan was saying, the integral Hudson School District's Strategic Plan twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, the pyramid that was developed for the schools. It's at the bottom of that triangle again. The community members are the most crucial ingredient for the success of Hudson Schools and the education of its children. The last time I was here, the board acknowledged that during comment time, community input was four to one in favor of mask optional. Yet the drive to force masks for the children still reigns supreme. This board is not a medically trained board and certainly is not privy to the private medical histories of every child and staff member of this district. Yet you're making medical decisions for them and ignoring their most basic fundamental need, human need of bodily autonomy and protection. Please don't go ignore the pleas of the community who's communicating with you in so very many ways. And I ask on behalf of my spouse and other spouses who aren't here, please support your staff members. Don't ask them to tell children to wear masks. It's not their job. They're not medical professionals and it's a dangerous precedent to set.
Thanks, Lisa. Next up, we have Cassie Redu. Hope I said that right. Cassie, Casey? Sorry.
Hi, my name is Cassie Ryder. I live at thirty-four Nicholas Way. I'm a mother of seven children. I was born and raised in this town. I graduated from this high school, as did my upper three children. I am also a master's prepared psychiatric nurse practitioner. I've been a nurse for eighteen years. I've been working in COVID for the last eighteen months while everybody hid in their homes and I had to go out and take care of people. What I'm going to tell you is as a psychiatric mental health provider, that we need to look beyond the mask and look at the mental health of our children. Suicide rates and suicidal ideation has nearly tripled in the adolescent population and not just suicidal ideations, but completed suicides. Depression is up. Children with disabilities don't want to go to school. My daughter, who is ADHD, even though she's on medication, doesn't want to keep her mask on. She's chastised by the teachers. My son is out on the playground or in Fayette and he says he can't breathe with that mask on and the teacher tells him, too bad, keep it on. I'm here to tell you today, as a COVID nurse, that what you have on your face isn't going to protect you. I have worked in Arizona as a prepared nurse in TB and valley fever. I have worked with COVID patients and I get fitted with an N ninety-five mask that fits my face. I have to stand in a booth to make sure that I can't smell vapors, to make sure that transmission's not possible. And what I can tell you is you are not protected with what's on your face because droplet precautions do not apply to those masks and they go through it. I am asking you as a mother of seven children, and I do have the medical background to back this up, to take the masks off our children, let them be children, let them enjoy their life, let them want to go back to school, make friends and smile. I am sick to death of this crap and I've been in it for eighteen months and I'm sorry to be so harsh. But you know what? Somebody has to stand up. And unless you have the medical background that I do, I suggest as of today, you get rid of the mask and you back down because each of your chairs are voted on and I will show up and I will vote you out.
Thanks, Cassie. Our last person is Stacy Cupka.
Thank you. I'm not a public speaker, so I'm very nervous right now. But first of all, I want to thank those of you who have sat here and listened. I watched many of you that sat here and paid attention and looked at the individuals that were talking. And I also watched many of you working on your computers while mothers were crying out to you on behalf of their children. These parents, we entrust you with what's most valuable to us when we've dropped our kids off at the front door. Remember that. I'm going to read to you because, again, I'm not a public speaker. I want to be the voice tonight. I want to be the voice of the students that struggle with mental health issues. Last year, the mandates, let's see, struggle with mental health issues due to the mandates and are now fearful of having to relive a year like last year. I'm a mother of four teenagers. I get to do life with lots of teenagers. It's wonderful. And I get to hear their stories and get a little window into what's going on in their lives. I know multiple students last year that dealt with mental health issues, even some nieces and nephews within my own family that were dealing with anxiety, depression, started cutting and even ended up in the hospital multiple times for suicide watch. Someone earlier mentioned equity and equity for students. I have a niece who is hard of hearing. She did online school last year. It was very tough for her. She reads lips. She tried coming back to school because she was struggling with the online school and couldn't do it because of the masks. Where was the equity for her? Where's the equity for the students that miss multiple days of school due to headaches? Where's the equity for the students that do miss multiple days of school due to mental health? I'm almost done. As a job, I have the privilege of supporting mental health providers. They're exhausted. They're, they have had extreme cases and the cases that they have are more extreme. Again, they're exhausted. I got to attend multiple health and human health, St. Croix County Human Health Board meetings throughout the year. And you mentioned the cost that it is to our community and as a whole. I got to sit on a budget. We were short for mental health services, child protection services, drug and alcohol due to overdoses and relapses. It costs our community lots of money, these mandates do. I want to think, oh. I ask that you remember the individuals who are made up of a physical, spiritual, and mental. Please take into consideration the child as a whole and not just one aspect of who they are. Please keep masks optional and up to the parents. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. All right, that concludes the public comments. I just want to say thank you to everyone that came tonight and spoke. Thanks for treating one another with respect. I'm very grateful for that. And we as a board are grateful for that. So thank you so much. We'll take a recess now and we will come back for our annual meeting that starts at seven. And then we will pick up the rest of the board meeting after the annual meeting's complete.
All the meeting back into order and we'll start with superintendent reports. I want to stand corrected for making the mistake on the agenda of the annual meeting for missing your your report, Nick, and apologies to Tracy. I know that you worked hard on that report. There's lots to crow about in our district and I hate to have missed that opportunity to tell folks about it, so.
No, I appreciate that. I just figured you were starting to send a message, so that's understandable. So I'm going to touch on a couple of things tonight. COVID operational update being the first one. Just to kind of let you know where we are in the district with everything. So we are, let's see, starting our third week in the school district. Things have been going, I think, fairly well for the most part. EP Rock last week was in a mask mandate for the week and they came back out of the mask mandate and they're mask required, recommended this week. However, we do have five buildings that are in the mask required. Part of the matrix, which is the high school, the middle school, Hudson Prairie, Willow River, and River Crest Elementary. Just to give you kind of a heads up or breakdown where we're at, we have had seventy-four cases since the start of the school year. I know there's been some questions about three cases that happened at Rock because the notes said that they weren't actually in school. They were in school. They were at our meet the parent night. And so they were at school and the cases were counted over the weekend because they actually, they weren't in the first day of school, but they were actually in school. And so I just wanted to clarify that we, we count Saturday and Sunday's cases and Monday's counts. And so to do a full seven days, we were, we were counting them. So as that works, we've had seventy-four cases in the school district essentially since the weekend right before the start of school till now. Ten of those cases have been staff cases out of the seventy-four. Out of those ten staff cases, nine have been vaccinated staff and have been breakthrough cases. So, you know, we're watching that. It is obviously a concern for us because although they've been very mild cases, which would lead us to believe that the vaccine works, you know, it, it still doesn't keep us from having to have them be home for ten days. And so that creates, can create some staffing issues for us. So we'll continue to kind of monitor that situation. You know, one of the challenges that we're having, and I think some people spoke to it tonight, is we are having people send their symptomatic children to school. And that, that is a challenge for us. And what's happening, it's happened multiple times where, and it's, it's understandable. People can confuse the seasonal allergies with COVID because a lot of the symptoms are the same or the cold or the flu. And what's happening is they're coming to school, then potentially testing a day or so later, finding out they're positive and then coming home, but they have been in the building. So, you know, we understand that, you know, it's a mistake sometimes people make, but it is, it is a challenge for us. It's been a challenge for us kind of forever, since the kind of advent of Tylenol when parents would send their kids to school sometimes with the fever and maybe give them some Tylenol in order to get that fever down. So it's, it's nothing new that we haven't been dealing with. It's just with COVID, it creates a little bit more challenging situation as it's become such an infectious situation with the Delta variant. I can tell you that we're case-wise, we are on way more cases at this point in the year than we were last year. I think we were about, at this point last year, two weeks in, we had, you know, probably a total of about, I think, fifteen cases. I'm not exactly sure. So we've had quite a few more cases, but again, we would expect that considering that the Delta variant is quite a bit more contagious than others. We are seeing a lot of family spread. So we're seeing kids that go on our spreadsheets from public health saying that they're close contacts because a family member has tested positive. And more times than not, other members of the family are testing positive. It's, I would say, pretty common that the unvaccinated individuals in the household are end up testing positive. And even sometimes vaccinated individuals in the household are ended up testing positive. So not, not uncommon to see on our sheets from public health where we may have one family that accounts for three or four cases across the district in two or three different buildings in the district. And so, again, it's, it's something that we are seeing, you know, quite a bit. I'm not saying it's the goal, it's the standard that every time there's a family member positive, everybody else gets it. But I would say that we were not seeing this last year. I mean, there was a lot of times a family member would be positive and nobody else in the household would really get it or maybe one other person. Now we're seeing, you know, amongst the school age kids, multiple, multiple members of the family get it. So obviously something we're keeping an eye on. It's concerning. As of right now, we do not have, that I'm aware of, any cases in the district that have required a hospitalization or anything along those lines as far as so far this year. And so we, our nurses keep a, keep a pretty close tab on that as we continue to work through that. The other issue somewhat COVID related is busing. And I think you've probably seen this around the, around the nation, bus driver shortages across the country. And we've done pretty well to hit all of our routes and keep our routes full. But we have had now some cases on buses with, with drivers and it's putting real stress on our system. We are starting to have to combine some routes, especially some of the routes that are much more clustered around some of our elementary buildings so that we can combine them because we won't have enough drivers to do all of our routes. And so we're working, traffic stations, working with Safeway on that. We're also running into some challenges related to activity buses because not having enough drivers to even drive our regular routes. You know, when you think about if we send a football team or a soccer team or a field trip or something like that out to an away venue, that's a bus and a driver that can't be driving the normal take home route that they would normally have. And so we need to, we need to have extra drivers for that. So if you happen to know people that wouldn't mind driving a bus, we put out the plug for Safeway because even substitute drivers would be a huge help if people don't want to drive all the time, but maybe want to drive occasionally, that would be huge. Our drivers have done an outstanding job and they're working, working hard on those things. But we're working with Safeway to see what we can do to try to help mitigate some of those things. I know Stillwater School District, the Saturday before their first day of school, they sent an email out to parents canceling twenty-one bus routes for school. We want to make sure we don't get to that. But there comes a point where if we have no drivers, there's nobody to pick kids up. We won't have any other choice but to put that on parents. We hope we don't get there. And so we're trying to take some proactive approaches to that. With that being said, that is the COVID operational update for today. Any questions?
I have a few questions that came up as everybody was talking. So I jotted a few down and that I've kind of heard in emails from people too. Wondering about exceptions. So I hear a lot of, and I've heard from my own kids, you know, like the policy is very, very strict with the masks. And I do think kids deserve to have a little, a break if they need it or a breather. So I think maybe that is the case, but teachers might need a reminder to be a little more gentle with that.
Yeah, yeah. So kids are not required to wear masks out at recess, are not required to wear masks outside for any of the outside activities. Teacher takes class outside. They don't need to wear masks. If PE is outside, they don't have to wear masks. If, if there are kids that need a mask break and a teacher's not allowing them to have a mask break, I would highly encourage those parents to reach out to the building principal and let us know what's going on because we would want to honor that. We obviously don't want kids to feel like they can't take the mask off or that they have to be scared to ask for a mask break. We do ask kids that if they're going to wear masks, that they wear it properly. It's over their nose and mouth and when it's required and, you know, so yes, we are enforcing that and expecting kids to follow those rules.
Okay. And then that made me think, can you just explain to people the thought process behind the no mask required after three? That's a question I've gotten.
Yep, absolutely. So we know that during the school day, kids are required to be here versus the activities that happen after the school day are purely optional and people can choose to come if they want or they can choose to stay home. And so while what we've done is when we are going to mandate a mask requirement in any of the buildings, it would be during this normal school day. The other piece is, is because we move in and out of the mask requirements on a weekly basis, trying to make sure that although it's easier to enforce and handle during the normal school day, we can get our communication out to our parents and to our students. we can get our communication out to our parents and to our students. It's a little bit more challenging to get that communication out to the community that utilizes their buildings in the evenings in an effort to not have them all of a sudden show up and say, I'm sorry, you can't come in, you don't, you know, you don't have a mask and having to have people at all the doors all night long in all the different buildings. You know, we've chosen to say, okay, after the normal school day, masks are optional because all the activities that happen after the school day are optional. People can choose not to come to those activities. And so that has been the rationale behind that decision. So that we're trying to make it as palatable as we possibly can for as many people as we can.
Okay. And then my last question is, if we have a policy or plan for kids who are deciding not to wear a mask, what have we done so far?
Yep. So we've called parents to come pick them up. If parents will not pick them up or will not give permission for the kid to leave, then they'll, they hang out in the office. You know, we've talked to both their legal counsel on this and conferred with other school districts. The expectation is that when there's a rule in effect is that, you know, people would follow the rules until the rule changes. And so the same thing would happen. We'll offer a mask, we'll look for ways to create an exception if people have a medical exception, which is a medical note from a medical doctor saying, there's a reason my child can't wear this mask. It's signed by a medical doctor. We'll absolutely honor that note. If there's, the way the religious exemption works is, you know, the state of Wisconsin determines a religious exemption is a bona fide religious practice from a bona fide religion. So it's not necessarily one that is, I feel this way, therefore I don't have to follow the rules. It is, it's been, that's been outlined in the way that the state of Wisconsin determines what a religious exemption is. But if there is a bona fide religion that has a bona fide religious practice that's against mask wearing, then we would honor that as well. And so, you know, that's been, that's been our practice. I mean, we do have rules. We've always had rules. We've always had expectations of what kids can and cannot do when they walk through our doors. We've had rules whether it relates to dress, whether it relates to conduct, whether it relates to, you know, a whole variety of things. And so the masking is no different than that. And our hopes, as I think most of the people that spoke tonight, is that we can get out from underneath these things as soon as humanly possible. And I would agree with that. And I think everybody up here would agree that we want to be out from underneath these things as quick as possible. But as of right now, the rules are when the mask matrix kicks into effect, mask is required and we would expect our students to follow the rules.
You had a question? Questions?
Yes, Bob.
As mentioned tonight about sanitizer being empty, sanitizing stations, I'm assuming that that's an exaggeration since we have plenty of sanitizer.
I did jot it down as notes and we do have plenty of hand sanitizer and we'll find out why it's not being checked. But if there are areas of the building where hand sanitizer is not available, we definitely will make sure that it's checked over the next day or so and make sure it happens. The same thing with masks. We do have lots of masks. The state has given us lots of masks. We have lots of masks that we've purchased. So if somebody does forget a mask or needs to change a mask because they've been in it for a while and they want a fresh mask, we have plenty of masks to be able to swap masks out for people as well.
And as far as the, I know as mentioned too about all the protocols have gone out with Plexiglas. We've talked about Plexiglas and the reasons why we're not using that as much. But also, you know, lines on floors or arrows, we are still doing some trafficking, correct?
You know, I mean, at the elementary primarily, we're trying to keep line spaced apart and things along those lines. I mean, at the high school, we're not as traffic oriented as we were in the past years or in last year. The biggest thing is because again, as we're seeing that, you know, that time exposure is one of the big pieces. And when you have passing time, it's only six minutes long, you know, likelihood of having that time exposure, you know, drops drastically. So it's not been as great. We are trying to, you know, space kids out and have more space than like in lunch lines and things along those lines. But it's never going to be perfect and we weren't perfect last year. You know, we try to shoot for about three feet of space has kind of been the new guidelines with social distancing. We know that we can't always get there. And, you know, we make adjustments and work through that. Just like last year, we started the year, we did a ton of cleaning on a daily basis. And then as the science continued to develop, it was, you know, there is more risk related to airborne, not as much related to surfaces. And so we started to back off some of that. We are running our, one of the number one things we can do from what we've been told is ventilation in our handling system. We are running tremendous amounts of fresh air in these buildings. Part of the reason why a lot of times they feel a little cold, especially right now is because as you start dumping so much air into this building, you're also cooling it in the process. Otherwise the building turns into kind of a soggy mess. And so the air seems like it's, you know, we're running a little bit cooler than what we would normally run. And so we'll continue to do that. So we haven't dropped all mitigation strategies contrary to what some may feel. We have the Plexiglas, it is available if needed, but, you know, the Plexiglas is again, as it evolved, became less and less of an issue as we moved throughout the year and created some real obstacles for us in certain situations.
Other questions?
All right. The second one I have on here is the start of school update. And really it's just to tell you, the start of school has been a really good start of school. You know, our numbers, I think, are looking reasonably good. We're probably not going to bounce back the two hundred and forty children that we were down last year, but we're looking to make some gains. Friday is our third Friday count. I know some people kind of say, well, if I hold my kid out on Friday, does the school district not get to count the kid then? That's not how it works. It's basically where your child's enrolled on the third Friday count in September. Because sometimes a child is sick, sometimes they have to, they have a funeral or they have a family obligation. That doesn't mean that all of a sudden they're not our student for the entire year. So it's just the third Friday count is, it's just that it's when they're enrolled, third Friday of September. As far as our back-to-school staff, it was a great experience getting all of our staff back. It's been very positive. And, you know, there's going to continue to be challenges throughout this year and there are every year. But it's been a really positive start to the year. We look forward to a continued positive start to the year. My third area is actually, I'm going to turn it over to Dave.
Thank you very much. So although Nick didn't get to highlight all the great things happening in the year, this is one of the examples of some great things that happened last year. And as you know, we have a district goal of increasing the number of students who take part in taking college level courses and having the potential to earn credit. There's three benefits to this sort of work. One is that level of rigor helps students find success in their regular coursework. Two, the research is really clear. Students that have an experience taking a college level course while in high school have a much more increased likelihood of finding success in their post-secondary school. And then thirdly, and one that I know is important to many, it saves a lot of money if you can earn college credit while you're still in high school. There's three ways you can earn college credit while in high school in Hudson. One, through dual credit, which is an agreement we have with UW River Falls, where students take classes in high school and they earn credit both at high school and at UW River Falls. Nice thing about that is those are transferable credits. They can use them throughout the UW system. The second is through articulated courses. That's agreements that we have with our technical school partners where students can take classes, again, in high school and earn college credit through our technical school partners. And then three, advanced placement, where you take a course and then take an exam. And then if the score reaches a certain level, you earn the college credit. Actually, you can take the exam without taking the class too. And we have some students that take advantage of that opportunity. This recognition tonight is about AP specifically. So the college board this year has recognized one hundred and ninety individual honors. Some students have received multiple honors, so one hundred and ninety individual honors for students who have demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through their performance on AP exams. And multiple AP exam is the key here. So we had ninety Hudson High School students that reached the AP scholar level. That's granted to students who receive a score of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Ninety students is quite a few that reached that level. We have thirty Hudson High School students that earned the AP scholar with honor distinction. They had to receive an average score of at least three point two five on all AP exams taken, all AP exams taken and a score of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And then AP scholar with distinction, fifty-eight students earned this. Students who receive an average score of at least three point five on all AP exams taken and score three or higher on five or more of these exams. That's impressive. And then we had twelve high school students that earned a capstone diploma. And this is new to us because we've only had AP research and AP seminar for a few years. This is a diploma that's granted to students who earn a three or higher on the AP seminar and AP research, two separate courses and on four additional AP exams of their choosing. The AP seminar and AP research, these are students that are engaged in college-level research. It is really impressive. I've had the honor of working with some of these students and giving them some advice in their research proposals. Absolutely amazing, but we're proud of all these students. It's an amazing accomplishment. Thank you.
Questions for Dave on the AP scholar report?
Not seeing any hands, but thank you for the report and thank you for at least getting one of the highlights in that we missed out on, all right?
Appreciate you.
Now entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda and the expenditures as stated in the agenda.
President?
Carrie.
Move to approve of the consent items and that the chief financial operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of one million, five hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Bob. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bruce, second by Carrie. All those in favor say aye.